Is it the end of his?
Oh, you did?
Okay, I'd like to call today's meeting to order. If we could stand for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and trust as our home.
All right, Madam Clark, can we have the roll call, please?
Jamie Girardi.
Here.
Dawn Anderson.
Here.
Peter Hansel. John Moody.
Here.
Christopher Poole.
Here.
Chris Williams.
Here.
And Chairman Charles Gray.
Here. All right, and the proof of publications?
The items were published in the Tampa Bay Times on October 9th, 2022, and October 19th, 2022.
All right, thank you. Can I see them? Any minutes?
No.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody today. We are the Pasco County Planning Commission and appointed by the Board of County Commissioners. We meet twice monthly. We serve as a local planning agency and we hold public hearings to transmit to the Board of County Commissioners our recommendations on comprehensive plan amendments, land development code amendments, rezonings, and conditional use requests. Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for special exceptions, certain appeals, variance requests, and certain alternative standard requests. However, final decisions may be appealed to the Board of County Commissioners. If anyone is in opposition to any development code amendment, rezoning, conditional use, or any item where the Planning Commissioner makes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, it would be important for you to attend the important follow-up meeting at the Board of County Commission. And we have those dates available if you have any questions. For those of you who are not familiar with the pattern of our meetings, we have three sections. We have continuances, and those are items where the staff or the applicant has requested a continuance for any number of reasons. It's been our tradition to approve those requests for continuance unless there are extenuating circumstances. We then have consent, and those are items where we have not received any complaints or questions from the staff or the public. Those items will be gone through one at a time, but will be voted on altogether once we go through there. If we read anything on consent, we read that we read. If you have questions about it, raise your hand. We'll be glad to pull it off consent for discussion onto the regular items. And that's the last group. The regular items will be discussed and discussed, and the applicants will have an opportunity to make their presentation, and the people in the audience will have a chance to ask The applicant and the questioners will be limited to three minutes per person, and then the applicant will have an opportunity to come back and respond to any questions that may have been offered. For any of those, any of you, and probably most of you have a telephone with you, it should be a good time to put it in the silent position so we don't interrupt anybody that's speaking. And before we start the meeting, this is an opportunity for anyone who's here to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda. You can come forward and state your name and address, ask the questions, and we'll see if we can get you an answer. Does anyone here that wants to speak to something that's not on today's agenda? I don't see anyone. So I guess we can begin the regular agenda. Okay, Mr. Nice.
Did you maybe want to swear, those in who may want to speak?
Yeah. For anyone who thinks they might want to give up, get up and give testimony and speak or speak today, if you'll please stand and raise your right hand, please, and be sworn. Anybody who plans to speak?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give as a truce to help you, God? Thank you.
Okay.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am, thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. I do want to please apologize for my voice. I'm going to be a little horsey, froggy, whatever you want to call it. I'm just getting over laryngitis, so. The first item on the agenda is PC-1. It's PDD-23 CU-05. It's conditional use for Gulf Vision 2 LLC Verizon Wireless for a wireless communications facility. This item may seem familiar to you because you continued it at the last Planning Commission, but it was re-advertized because of land development code requires that the co-applicant be part, or the anchor tenant be part of the application. So we properly advertised it for today, and it's been on the agenda for a continuance. So the request to continue is the same continuance you voted on last time, but you're going to have to do it again today. So the continuance request is to December 8th, Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
All right, is applicant present? Is there anyone here to speak on this one? If not, do I hear a motion to continue?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion of the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
PC-2 is PDD-23 7664. It's in the name of Apple Enterprises Trust, Paul M. Adessi, and Maria Clementine Stamper, trustees, Catfish Townhomes. This is for a change in zoning from AR and R2 to an MF1 medium, multiple-family, medium-density district. The applicant has requested a couple of days ago in writing a continuance to the December 8th, 2022 Planning Commission meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
All right, my request for a continuance to December the 8th. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
All right. Is there anyone here to object? Seen no objections? So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the request for continuance? Any further discussion? Not all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Like sign for nay. Motion carries.
Following item is PC-3. It's PDD-23 7665 in the name of Rema Investments LLC, Apple Enterprises Trust. It's for a change in zoning from an R2 low-density residential district to a C2 general commercial district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right, this is on consent. So is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Seen no objections? All right, next.
Next is PC-4. It's PDD-23 7670. It's a zoning amendment in the name of Kickest Inc. It's for a change in zoning from an AR agricultural residential district to a C2 general commercial district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right. Is the applicant present? Anyone here to object? Seen no one to object? Okay.
Following item is PC-5. I believe this may be pulled because someone has signed up, but we'll check. It's PDD-23 7612 in the name of Deer Springs MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Deer Springs LLC. It's for a rezoning from an AC agricultural and AR agricultural residential district to an MPUD master plan unit development district to allow for the development of a maximum of 115 residential dwelling units or 100 residential dwelling units and up to five acres of office uses on approximately 38.29 acres. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet.
Okay, is applicant present? Did I see somebody back there? Okay. Anyone here to object?
We can't hear you.
All right.
I'm interested if the petition can't hear if you're asking for who wants to speak. I'd like to be heard on the pitch.
Okay, if you would like to speak, then we will pull this from consent. Okay? We'll pull this from consent so you can speak. Okay? We'll call you up as soon as we're finished with this. If you're welcome.
So now we're going to move on to APC-7, and that's PDD-23 7660. It's a zoning amendment in the name of MB3 Properties LLC, Matter Brothers, and it's for a change in zoning from an AC agricultural district and C2 general commercial district to a C2 general commercial district on approximately 9.4 acres. This item also comes to you with a deed restriction, voluntarily agreed upon deed restriction to, so that the applicant can draft a conservation easement and an environmental management plan together with the Natural Resources Division. So comes to you with a recommendation of approval.
All right. Is the applicant present?
The applicant is virtually present.
They are?
Yes.
Anyone here to object? Anyone here to object? I don't see anyone. Okay.
And for the record, no one had signed up to speak on WebEx on any of these items.
Okay.
And that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, there's a gentleman who raised his hand for, was he the applicant? This gentleman in the corner over there.
For PC-7?
Yes.
He is, he's with the applicant, yes.
I just want to make sure.
Mr. Dove.
Okay, great.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
You're forgiven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have an amended consent agenda, so do I have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda. I think remaining on consent is PC-3, PC-4, and APC-7. Is that right?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. So any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay. The amended consent agenda moves forward. And...
Did you want to move on to P6, or do you want to take up the?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do P6.
Okay.
All right, so if you could state your name and address.
Yes, hi, good afternoon.
Have you been sworn?
Yes.
Mr. Yonker's a county employee, so he's presenting the item for staff.
I'm a little concerned, he looks shady, though. Just kidding, just kidding.
Okay, hi, good afternoon. My name is Brian Yonker. I'm with Long Range Planning. I'm here to present project...
Does anybody tell you?
Okay, so here to present SEPALE 20213, I'm Hamilton Oaks, PDD-23 0013. If we can go to the next one, it's a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment. Okay, the property is located on 5930 Billmar Road in Wesley Chapel, located on the South Market District of the county. Okay, the proposal is a large-scale comprehensive plan amendment amending future land use map 215, 2-15 and Sheet 22. It's going from Rest 3, residential Rest 3, to Rest 6 on approximately 61.04 acres of real property located east of Billmar Road and north of Seffery Hill Bypass. The exact location of the project, the other 5930 Billmar Road in Wesley Chapel. The resolution is to amend FLU map, maps 2-15 and Sheet 22. There says rezoning, accompanying rezoning project under RC 7669, Hamilton Oaks MPUD. The following policies are consistent with the proposed comprehensive plan amendment. We got FLU 8.6 for our comprehensive plan, the official future land use map. We got policy FLU 8.1.2, South Market Area Establishment, and also policy FLU 1.4.3, transitional land uses. This is a map of the site location where the site is located in the 5930 Billmar Road in Wesley Chapel. We got the existing future land use of the project currently is Rest 3. Here is the proposed future land use being proposed to our R6, Rest 6, sorry. Zoning is AC, is abiding an MPUD. And the recommendation, recommend local planning agency fight a proposed amendment consistent with the comprehensive plan and to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
Any questions? Okay. Any questions from up here?
I just have a question, Mr. Yonker. So the village, AM, of villages Pasadena Hills is immediately to the north of this property, correct?
Correct.
And that has not come in yet, I don't think?
Excuse me?
That has not come in yet to be entitled yet, correct? If I remember right?
Well, it's not, that is not being addressed.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, I'm just thinking that that property has not come in for rezoning yet, to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge at the moment. I can further investigate related information if necessary.
I'm pretty sure I just want to confirm that. Thank you.
I've just got a couple of questions or comments here on this one. As far as the property, because I know it's kind of mentioned in multiple spots in the agenda memo, but the relationship of this property to Village of Pasadena Hills, obviously I can go through and I can pull that stuff up and it's easy, but in the future for me, I'd prefer to see something that shows, that gives some idea of that relationship and where this kind of fits in the puzzle. I mean, it's hard to kind of sort through this stuff and keep up with all these things that are going on, so that one's just a comment. And then the other one, there's a couple of things mentioned in the memo that talks about, there's a statement from the Sheriff's Office that talks about, I think it gives like a 63rd or 64th out of 67 counties as far as deputies per citizen. I mean, is anything being done about that? Because that seems like we're really falling behind, and there's a lot of development going on, and I don't know, is the Sheriff's Office falling further behind? Do you know, or is anybody talking about that?
Amy here.
Hi, guys. Hi, everybody. Amy Hyler with Long Range Planning. With respect to the Sheriff's Office comment, I could probably give just a little insight on that. As it relates to long-range planning, we don't really have anything that we have in our comprehensive plan that kind of helps mitigate for that. As we go through the comprehensive plan process, we're required to send it out to internal, external departments to capture those comments and make sure we can kind of assess them and evaluate them against the project scope. And so we've really been trying to ensure that the Sheriff's Office provides comments, anything. anything, because before we really weren't getting any responses from them. So until recently, they're just providing us with that blanket response being for the sixty-fourth out of sixty-seventh. And we don't want to, we don't support any rezoning. So that's all we're really getting from them at this point in time. I know that there's conversations and discussions of us trying to kind of work with fire, work with all the public services to ensure that even though the increase in density is occurring and you see these projects coming in, we're still coordinating with them to try to mitigate for that. But at this moment, we don't have anything in place to kind of help with that, so.
Yeah, and I think that kind of highlights, it was probably two, three, four years ago, I think Sheriff Nakow was in here and he made a statement that he'd like to see somebody involved in the reviews, and then we went a couple of years where we didn't, there was not any feedback given, so it's nice to see that we're at least getting the feedback now.
Yeah, we've always had them on the distribution list. I've been here for almost five years, that we've always had them on the distribution list, but we've really been trying to push and push and push to get some level of comment, even saying no comment type thing. So we have that interaction with them. So this is kind of where we're at now with that response and coordination with them.
Good, and it's good to get feedback, because I mean, it does seem like there's a missing piece in the puzzle there with officers.
Yeah, and we've been coordinating with other public, like fire and whatnot, with them to try to work with them and provide the services and make sure that the comprehensive plan is up to date to help them in these planning processes, but it's still kind of in the baby phase right now.
You weren't here at the last meeting, but I extended an invitation if the sheriff or representative from the sheriff's office would like to come in and speak, I'd like to hear from them because that might influence how I vote on things. I'd like to hear if they have, if certain projects generate more crime or more calls for emergency services.
Absolutely.
That'd be good information for us to have to make a decision.
Right. Yeah, and that's kind of what we do.
Have they given you a person certain?
What is it?
Have they given you a person certain at the sheriff's department, or you just sent...
Our contact is Sandborn. So Mayor, Major Sandborn, that's our contact, who is responsible for reviewing the projects and then providing comments, so. So typically our response is noted, we recognize we are sixty-fourth, and it's like, do you have any, you know, anything you want to see from us during these projects? And they usually respond back, not at this time.
All right, Amy, thank you.
I have one question. How does the property get accessed? It says in the report that the access is from a thirteen-foot wide private road. We're about to approve a lot of density on a project, do we, do they have a right to improve that road? Are they going to be using that road for access? Are there plans for another road?
I think from my understanding, it's the Zephyr Hills bypass is to the south, so they will be extending.
But right now it doesn't stop, it doesn't get to their property, so how does the Zephyr Hills bypass ultimately get extended to their property so that they can use it for access?
I can get the developer up here real quick, but from my understanding, I think once it is constructed, it does abut the southern boundary of their project.
Can you show the map again?
Yes.
Okay, if you want to come up and give your name and address, and I believe you've been sworn.
Good afternoon, Kristy Barrero with Height Design, 5904 Hampton Oaks Parkway, Tampa, Florida. I have been sworn in. So currently Zephyr Hills bypass ends at Casin Street. If you go to the future land use map, it's a little bit easier to see the location. Unfortunately, the aerials aren't up to date. So you can see the orange is where the road currently ends. There's, the road going north is Casin Street or Boulevard, I'm not sure which. There is a tan piece of property that the county currently owns. That is right, that's land that will be used for the eastern extension of Zephyr Hills bypass. And then the yellow property is part of newer MPUD. And part of their MPUD, or one of their MPUD conditions, is to dedicate land for the extension of Zephyr Hills bypass when the county requests it. With our applications, we have asked the county to now request that land so we can continue that road to the east, and they are working on getting that right of way currently. With this comp plan, we also have a companion MPUD zoning that's being processed. And with our zoning request, we are proposing to extend Zephyr Hills bypass from Casin Drive to the entrance of our project.
So Kristy, that MPUD is in-house?
It is, it's currently going through a review. We have not received the first round of comments yet, but it has been submitted.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any timeframe for Zephyr Hills bypass all the way over to Island, or is it just as development comes in?
I'm not sure about that. I believe it's as development comes in.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to elaborate on the VOPH questions that you all had earlier. What staff said is correct, that the Depew Nut MPUD is being reviewed currently, it has not gone to hearings yet, but I just wanted to add that the VOPH enabling documents were recently updated that changed Village M from a type three village, which is the lowest density village, to a type two village, which is kind of the middle density. That type two village allows for between forty and fifty percent of the developable area to be a maximum of five units per acre. So again, we feel that the future land use of residential six for the sixty-one acres conforms with the density that is either constructed or planned around us. And if I'm here to answer any other questions that you all have.
Are there any other questions up here?
Chris, I think the only other question I had was about the schools, and it looked like that the level of service was exceeded with these proposed uses. I just want to make sure, is the school, everything okay on the school side?
Yes, because, and I'll tell you why, it's always hard to try to see how things are going, but, so on the elementary side, certainly Watergrass Elementary and Wesley Chapel Elementary are over, but we're getting ready, we're just broke ground or about to break ground on a K eight on the Kirkland Ranch campus, that'll be a STEM magnet school, or a magnet school, I'm not sure if it'll be STEM, it'll be a magnet school on the Kirkland Ranch campus, so that will draw from this area. So in addition to that, there are a couple charter schools coming in the Wesley Chapel area, opening in the next couple of years, so that'll draw from this area as well. That K eight will, and those K eights, whether it's charter or are magnet, will also impact not only elementary, but because it's K eight, it'll impact the middle school and should help with Waitman Middle situation as far as the high school. That is over, but again, we just opened the Kirkland Ranch Academy, which is the technical high school on the east side, and this is their first year, so we anticipate further impact to Wesley Chapel High. But then also in addition, I know Pine Crest Academy, which is a charter school out there, is adding some high school component to there, so that's going to impact. High school's the one I'm most concerned about, but again, with, we'll probably add a wing perhaps at Wesley Chapel High in the future, but we'll continue to monitor that. But that, I think, kind of in a nutshell is, yes, it's over, but we know there are things coming that are going to have an impact to that region.
All right.
And then also, I know the Depew property, which is to the north, I know I've had some conversation with them about potential school sites in there. Again, whenever that comes in, we'll talk more about that. I'm not sure what or if we will have anything in there, but that's a possibility as well. Thank you for asking about that.
One more, one more question, Mr. Chairman. So Kristy, or staff, so you're asking for rez six, but you're only talking about doing, I just want to get this on the record, a maximum of 240 units out there, so you're asking for a little less than four, actually, if we...
That is correct, yes. So unfortunately, you don't have a future land use category between three and six. We want it a little more than three, but yes, it'll be less than six.
Okay, so you're going to max it at 240?
That is correct, that's what the zoning conditions will say.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, if not, we'll hear a motion. So moved.
Did we hear a comment yet?
Yeah, I think I asked, did I? Is there anyone to speak on this beyond the county? I think I asked already.
They're pointing to somebody.
No, that's P five.
Or is that the previous one of the other item?
I think that's the other item.
Yeah, yeah.
It's for PC five.
Okay.
Okay. Very good.
I'll move again, so moved.
Second. Okay, that's actually third now. First and the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, like sign. Okay, thank you very much.
All three of you.
Thank you.
Okay. I think we're back to PC five?
That's correct, and Ms. Snyder is going to present the item.
Okay.
We're bringing up the PowerPoint.
All right. Amy Sanders, Planning Development Department. Here we have the Prince and beauty, PDD 22 7612. Next slide please. Here we have the location map. Five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. Here we go. Here's a broad view of the actual location. We have the city of Zephyr Hills above the northeast. We have S I fifty-six.
Ending there on the Boulevard down the west. The cobblestone MPUD that's approved in the works is just north of this one. And then next slide please. The request is a rezoning from AC Agricultural and AR Agricultural Residential zoning districts to an MPUD to allow for the development of either a maximum of 115 residential detached dwelling units or a maximum of 100 residential detached dwelling units and up to five acres of office uses. Total site area is approximately 38.29 acres. Next slide. The applicant is also seeking the following variations from the code, section 901.1.8, special design requirements for subdivision collectors, which requires public type one and type one B roadways. Applicant wants any internal roadways to this MPUD to be private. Section 901.6. D. Point eleven, street access to adjoining property requires interconnects between projects. There's currently an east-west right-of-way bisecting the project and no potential connection to the north. There are planted lots on the northeast and southwest, and a rural dirt road to the south, which may possibly be an emergency-only connection in the future. Next slide. The PDD has reviewed these requested variations and is amenable to allowing both for the reasons stated, and there are further details in your agenda memo. Next slide. Here's the master plan, you'll see that I did include the north arrow on the top, the north is to the left. Next slide. The subject site is in the East Market area and is being used for agricultural pursuits. No increase in density from the existing rez three future land uses proposed. Any proposed office uses may not occupy more than five acres of the MPUD per the comprehensive plan, and it must be consistent with the rez three floor area ratio of .27 for any actual acreage committed to these office uses. LDC section four, 2.2. C. Point eight specifies that variations from the code may be reviewed and approved by the PC and BCC during the public hearing held, and if the BCC finds that nature exceeds the intent of the code. The Planning and Development Department has reviewed the request of variations and find that they do meet the intent of the LDC as noted. Therefore, the proposed request is consistent with the Pascal County LDC, chapter 400, subsection 402.2 zoning MPUD, and with the applicable provisions of the Pascal County Comprehensive Plan. Next slide. And with that, the PDD recommends approval with conditions.
All right, Ms. Shelley?
Thank you, Shelley Johnson, 6400 Madison Street, and I have been sworn. I just wanted to address, I know Mr. Sierra is here to speak on this today, and I did have a chance in the interim to have some correspondence with my clients and the engineers who are not here today, because my understanding from my conversation with him outside is his concern on this and why he pulled it is the route of the State Road 56 extension. And there's, I think there's some concern that it's maybe potentially planned to go through this particular property, and that there's not enough right-of-way being preserved. So I did check with my clients, and I, they've sent me FDOT emails, and there is absolutely no proposal for the State Road 56 extension to go through this property. They are specifically asking, or the 50-foot is specifically what they want, which is what we've provided with regards to the east-west right-of-way dedication and set aside on the, through the middle of this property. And he's also saying that there's no funding for design or construction right now for that extension, so there's no PD need or anything of that nature. So we're happy to answer any questions. My concern is that what's kind of, his concern's not really anything to do with this property, but we're here to answer questions, so.
All right, all right, you want to hang close there somewhere, Shelley, where we can get responsive, we need to? Okay. Is there anyone else, Shelley, that can speak on your side? Okay. Very good. Can we have your name and address?
My name is Michael Sierra, I'm an attorney with offices at 703 West Swan in Tampa, here today with the pleasure of representing my wife and my children and myself as owners of Festival Park, which is immediately west of the property here in question. I'm not opposing development of the property. I am concerned about the agenda memorandum that you've received. There are a lot of factual issues that I would contest, if you would. For one thing, it says that formerly the State Road 56 extension, which has now been realigned. I have been in touch with the Department of Transportation pretty consistently every couple of months for the last three or four years since prior to 56 being finished and dead-ending in my front gate, 20 feet of which I gave them, gave it to the state to facilitate it for no compensation. I'm in favor of developing going forward, and I would, I would want to see 56 be extended. There are several proposed routes for 56. There have been public hearings, and there have been news put out by the Department of Transportation and people invited to attend. There are five corridors that have been offered, some of which go through the very property which you're now being considering for zoning, and it's almost impossible for it not to go through my property, and I'd be happy if they could find some other way to do it. But I think that's going to be the public need, and I'm, I'm happy to accommodate when the time comes. However, it should be considered, and if you're considering this development and you are planning, which means tomorrow and many tomorrows to come, if you don't take into account a major need such as the extension of State Road 56, you're simply not taking into account what needs to be for future in the plan, in my humble opinion. The recommended, the agenda memorandum further states that there is an existing public east rez right-of-way. If you'd see the picture up there, it goes from nowhere to Crystal Springs Road. It's a 40-foot road that was planted with the Colony Springs long, long ago, at least 40, 50 years ago. I've owned the property since 87, and I know that at that time, I vacated right-of-ways through the park so that I could use it without worrying about that. The property has wet on it and has, certainly not drivable, and by, by this development, placing the road over where it did on the north side as opposed to the south side, didn't utilize the 40-foot right-of-way, because if it did, it was going to have to help all of its neighbors out with access as well. I'll move along because I know I'm to be limited on my time. In the memorandum, it says that they didn't take into account the needs of Springdale because there's only a handful, I mean, there's a substandard rural dirt road to which a project is not proposing a connection because Springdale Road only serves a handful of rural residents. Well, I don't know why there's a distinction between rural and city, but whatever they are, they're residents, they're voters, they're taxpayers, and it's not, it's not a hand, or at least in my mind... And it's not, it's not a hand, or at least in my mind, a handful is four or five. There's actually twenty-four, if you go and count them, all of which are going to be impacted by this traffic. Springdale.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Try to finish.
May I go on?
Please go.
Okay. Crystal Springs Road comes to a halt, to an end, at Chancy Road. And I would invite you to come out there at eight o'clock in the morning any day of the week, including weekends. It's a traffic jam, get in and out. And since fifty-six has been open, you can stand at my front gate and count hundreds of cars coming through there, going to the bypass, going to Chancy Road. Well, if you dump another hundred and fifteen families with their cars, and in today's world, we have at least two cars per household. When we have childrens like we've all, like I've had, certainly, they each have to have a car. And when you start counting it, I'm not sure that we've properly accounted for these people's traffic needs. I'm not asking you to deny the request. What I'm asking you to do is to have them reconsider it and contact us. I received notice of this for the first time on the twentieth that was dated the seventeenth. I called the developer whom I know, and I could not get an answer back until yesterday. She answered all of my questions, and as I had gotten all the plans that I could from the county, I hired an engineer to look this over for me. Unfortunately, he's suffering with COVID and couldn't be here today. But nonetheless, I'm telling you the things that I'm concerned about. We have drawn a plan for Festival Park, and in our plan, we took into account what the state had asked us to do, which is to provide for County Road fifty-six, or State Road fifty-six. We, I've got those plans. I have not submitted a rezoning for it because the state of Florida hadn't decided where they want to put the road. And I don't want to put a right-of-way where they want it if they're not going to be accommodated. I think fifty-six and this project could both go forward, and I think it should be aligned with this forty-foot right-of-way, which is already owned by the county, and the developers proposing to give another five feet on each side, making it fifty feet. I'm not sure what the State Road fifty-six would need. I rather suspect it's more than fifty feet. But the state could pay the difference to the developer, and we could both coexist. Let me apologize, I am hearing impaired, and I've not been able to understand some of this. I'm sorry if I stood up out of turn. But I appreciate you giving me a couple of extra minutes to give you this information, and I hope this information will be of use or benefit to you.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here and.
Thank you.
And we'll make note of those items. And Shelley, if you want to come back up and respond, and make sure that, you know, that he can hear what you're saying.
Yeah, definitely.
Do you want to, do you need to come up closer so I can hear?
Did you need to come up closer so you could hear what I'm saying?
You can stand right next to her if you want.
That way you can hear what I'm saying? It'll help you hear?
No.
Want you to stand right there so I can hear?
I can't hear in the right ear at all, and I'm severely impaired on the left ear. I got a hearing aid. It just doesn't do. I'm sorry.
Stand here so you can hear her.
So you can hear what I'm saying? I'll be quick, I promise.
My wife is here, I have to keep my distance.
I did actually get a map that I just forwarded to Tammy via email, which is the FDOT map, and there's literally no alternative. Again, no PDNE, no design, no funding for this extension, obviously, right now. But none of the alternatives that they're looking at are actually even, the only ones that's even closed is south of this property, so none of them are within the project development area at all. I understand maybe you would like it to go through the middle of the development, but that's not what FDOT's plan is, and that's what FDOT has confirmed with us and with your engineers, the county's engineers.
So what you're saying is you haven't funded for that, and you don't have any control over it?
Yeah, it doesn't, they, from what they're saying is, you know, they're looking at alternatives. They're not doing, they're not in the design or anything like that. There's just no funding, so. But none of the even proposed alternatives in the event that this happens someday are even near this property. They're south, the closest one is south of the development boundary, so.
But you have no objection to what he's requesting?
In regards to.
In regards to where he'd like to see it go if it did eventually?
No, I mean, I think that's FDOT's decision, the route that it goes. I mean, I don't think our client has any control over that, and the route obviously isn't proposed to go through this property, so.
Is this the map you're referring to? I just got an email from David.
Yeah, I just.
I don't know if there's a way to put it up there or not. I sent it to you, Denise, too. I don't know. It might be helpful to see that.
Yeah, it is, because if you can see, this is.
Yeah. Is there any way to put it up there?
Yeah, we don't put it up.
Perfect. Thank you so much, everyone.
Yeah, I think if you look at this map, you'll see that.
Thank you, David.
It doesn't involve the property.
He's homesick.
But we did, staff did request that we dedicate ten more feet because there's forty-foot already existing through the east-west, you know, middle of the property. So we did give the additional ten feet. We don't have any access to Springdale Road. Our access is out to Crystal Springs Road, like cobblestone. We're actually doing the improvement from our southern boundary to the cobblestone southern boundary to bring that road up to standard. But I'm here to answer any other questions.
Just I want to make sure that he got all that.
Did you hear all that?
I heard what she said, yes. But I, I'm not sure what her address was on the existing right-of-way and why it wasn't used. Had we had an opportunity to have discussion while this was being done, I think some of these thoughts could have been at least considered. What I'm pointing up is that the neighbors weren't considered. The Department of Transportation, as of Monday, had not been contacted or discussed or questioned about where fifty-six was going or their thoughts on this project. And I certainly haven't been, and I, I'm thirteen hundred and twenty feet on them, and nobody called me before I called them. There is a right-of-way already existing of forty feet on the, on the south side of the leg that comes out to Crystal Springs. If the road had been put on that side as opposed to the opposite side, it could have accommodated a lot of use, and fifty-six could have gone through there without the major damage. And now we're going to have a road, the, what they're calling, I guess, an interior collector road. There is no real collector road anywhere. Crystal Springs Road, at best, is marginal to handle the traffic it's handling now. And I guess she's got the right to develop it anyway. But it would be better if it were planned to where the state could pick up that right-of-way through that already exists and put their road on top of that. It would enhance their project. It would certainly enhance the neighborhood, give everybody that lives in the area much better access. Thank you. If there's any questions, I'm happy to try to answer.
Are there any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
I have some questions for the applicant. It's going to go down my list here. First one being the actual dimensional standards that are proposed to the residential lots. I don't know, maybe Tammy, this is for you, but personally, I haven't seen one that was written this way. But the way that the dimensional standards are written, yes, they're fifty-foot wide lots, but they're asking for ten-foot front setbacks for primary structure and twenty-foot setbacks for the garage. I know we've heard a lot of things from the board, which I tend to agree with. You end up with these neighborhoods with these small lots with no landscaping in the front. I'm just having a hard time visualizing landscaping in front of any of these houses with ten-foot setbacks to the house where you're required to have a ten-foot utility easement. And then you're going to have the rest of the frontage is going to be driveway for the garage. So I don't know how, what's, I guess, what was the thought behind asking for ten-foot front setbacks? I guess I'll start there.
I mean, that's just the planning, how they designed it, how they laid it out. I think it's, you know, I don't know that any other MPDs have done it, but this is what their design was. I mean, they're going to have to comply with the landscaping code in regards to anything that they're doing, so.
Well, I just, as I looked through all the dimensional standards, they're asking for ten-foot front setbacks. They're pretty significantly above and beyond what you would ask for in Euclidean zoning as far as lot coverage. They're asking for seventy-five percent lot coverage for principal and accessory structures. I think the equivalent Euclidean zoning category for similar lot sizes would be forty-five percent. So I mean, that's quite a bit more lot coverage. I just, I've got a lot of heartburn with some of these dimensional standards that are included in this approval.
I agree with you, with, other than you weren't here at the last meeting. In R four, we did vote to recommend approval of an ordinance that would make lot coverage in R four sixty-five percent, inclusive of accessory structures. Currently, right now, it's forty-five and twenty. But it would make it a total of sixty-five on the lot. But I agree with you, seventy-five is excessive. And I agree, if you have a ten-foot utility easement in the front, there is no room for landscaping. Utilities will not let you landscape over the utilities. And I brought this up about planting trees in the right-of-way during the last meeting, too. We have storm sewers and utilities in the right-of-way, and we're trying to plant them in utility strips that are less than we require for a landscape island and a parking lot. So I, I said this during the hail call here. I mean, the forty and fifty-foot wide lots, I believe, are proving to be a problem. I think the public is seeing that they're a problem.
That's my, that's my thoughts and my feelings on the residential lots. On the, on the office lots, I guess I'm having trouble picturing thirty-five-foot by eighty-foot wide lots for the office product. What is the, what's the thought there, or what's the intent there?
Again, I'm not the planner on this. I don't, I don't know why the planner laid it out that way, and I actually wasn't even part of the comment process on it. So all I know is that's what they proposed, and we have a recommendation of approval. I mean, obviously, if there's things that are going to have to be massaged when they go to planning, there's things that are going to have to be massaged. I mean, they're way below their density. I think the density on this is a red six, and I think, as Tammy mentioned, we're way below that. So I mean, this is the first time that we're hearing any of these concerns, so.
Okay, yeah. I mean, I just, I just wanted to voice those for the record that I.
And I will definitely take this into consideration and talk to the clients about it. But yeah, this is the first time we're hearing any issues with it, so.
Okay, and then on the, this is an alternative standard request for the roadways. There's a request, I believe, and I'm not going off memory here, but I think there's a request to go with private roads instead of one A, one B roads.
Because we have no connection to anything. If you look at the surrounding development and properties, there's nowhere to interconnect to based on the existing infrastructure and development around the property. So that was why they supported their request, is my understanding.
But with the development of this density, you would be required to provide twenty-four-foot roads, and you're proposing twenty-two-foot roads, is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, what's on the plan is what they're proposing, yeah.
I mean, I, again, we have extreme density, extremely.
I mean, this is a very small development. This is a hundred and fifteen units.
People are inevitably going to be parked in the street. You're going to have a twenty-four, twenty-two-foot wide road, and you're going to have problems with accessibility and being able to navigate through the roads. There's one way in and one way out of this entire project. Naturally, the two parcels are connected, but there's one way in, one way out. I think there's a lot of problems here personally with this, what's being asked for.
Well, I know that your traffic department looked at it, and your traffic engineers, and they signed off on, you know, what was being proposed in terms of the access, so.
Well, is somebody online that can answer to those questions?
This is, again, the first time I'm hearing any issues with this as well.
We have a few, we have a few folks online that can speak to that. I have a few people online. Let me see who reviewed this project.
I think Amir was one of the people that worked.
Aston, can you answer some of these questions that are being asked on this project?
Yeah, hi. Good afternoon. This is Aston. I have this comp plan amendment and the associated traffic study, but generally, those do not look at the internal roadway, the width of it, and what Mr. Girardi is talking about. It deals with your long-term, certain roadway, whether they can handle the capacity or not. I don't think this is a capacity issue that we're talking about right now.
The only reason I'm asking that question, and I'm raising it here is because I have a feeling if they come in with their construction plans and they ask for twenty-two-foot wide roads and they ask for one way in, one way out, somebody's going to tell them they can't do that, and they're going to say, well, yeah, we can, per these MPD approval conditions.
Well, I think your conditions of approval actually allow access management to go back in and re-review when you go into plan approval. There's actually a provision in your standard conditions that reserve that right and jurisdiction over it. So it'll still be looked at further when it's further nailed down through engineering.
Mr. Girardi, with your site plan. We can, you know, do the access management review part of it, but again, access management doesn't get into what you're talking about right now, whether there should be a twenty-four-foot wide, twenty-two-foot wide. Our other team members in the technical group, they do get into that kind of review, and they would be commenting on it. However, it would be the planning folks, I think, that would comment on whether this form is correct or not, and if twenty-two-foot can be supported or not.
Okay, I mean, staff reviews this stuff. I just wanted to raise this, I saw these as potential.
Was any issues with that as far as the capacity is concerned? At site plan, we will definitely consider what you just mentioned. And for any development with more than a hundred units, provide an emergency access out. And obviously, when you do that access management study, we have to ensure that their access actually works, whether any changes are needed, whether a signal is needed. We get into that at time of site plan review. But from the traffic transportation study perspective, there weren't any issues identified.
That's all I had?
So, John, are you comfortable with the setback?
Not particularly, no.
I mean, we just made it.
I caught the same thing. My initial thought when I read the staff report was, well, fifty-foot wide lot's better than forty-foot wide lot. But I agree, I saw the ten-foot setbacks stuck out like a sore thumb to me, and I, it was my exact same thought, was there's a requirement for a ten-foot utility easement. That takes up the entire distance between the right-of-way line and the front of the house. Yeah, where does this landscaping go?
Sure, if, when I first read it, I thought it was a typo. I thought it was, it was backwards.
The other thing I.
I had to read it two or three times.
Twenty-foot setback to a garage. I drive a full-size pickup truck, and my trailer hitch is going to be sticking out over the sidewalk. And I understand that there's a conditions of approval that requires the HOA or the CDD to enforce parking on the street. But when you've got a lot where there's no place to park, inevitably, they're going to park on the street. I mean, not one of us has a house that doesn't host a birthday party or a Super Bowl party or have grandma and grandpa over, and they, they didn't take the bus. They brought their own car, and they park it somewhere. So I think we need to think twice about.
Well, didn't we just make a compromise on setbacks that we just, you just mentioned that at our last meeting?
I think that was on lot coverage.
It was a lot coverage?
It was a lot coverage.
Because we talked about the landscaping issues.
And that's where an ordinance has to be adopted or written.
Oh, okay.
Right. But Jamie makes the point, and I've seen this in multiple MPUDs coming through here since I've been back, is that the, in most of these MPUDs, they're allowing seventy-five percent lot coverage. There's no Euclidean zoning district that would allow seventy-five percent lot coverage. In fact, like I said, staff just brought us an ordinance during the last meeting that would bring it up to sixty-five in R four, whether that be the principal structure or some combination of principal and accessory structures. But seven, five-foot setbacks, seventy-five percent coverage. But yet, then the same requirement, we want more trees on the lot. And then, I mean, I realize I didn't win, I was not on the winning, or actually, we were at the planning commission, but not at the county commission, the winning side for the tow truck driver who makes his living towing cars out of problem developments like this.
He's behind this.
So what is the landscaping for, like, these units?
Yeah, what can you do? Well, they're required, the ordinance that we considered last meeting would require the minimum of two trees per lot for this size lot. And they want one of them in the front yard. To Jamie's point, there's no room to put it. It's impossible.
But there's no requirement for shrubbery if we're talking about landscaping in that regards. It's just trees.
It's just a tree.
It could be a tree and a pot.
Proposed ordinance said, well, they could landscape in the right-of-way, but I went to show pictures of Starkey Ranch and the distance between the back of the curb and the strip where they could plant it. It was almost seven and a half feet wide, and generally was occupied by storm sewers and utilities.
Yeah. Well, Shelley, I understand this is not a problem you created.
Well, I mean, again, we have, to me, it sounds like some of the concerns, and I'm listening to them, are, again, we have staff recommendation of approval. This is something that's been done on other MPDs. This isn't any different. It's a hundred and fifteen-unit development. That's going to do a huge improvement to the roadway, to Crystal Springs. And my only reaction is if the planners and the engineers for the owner and the buyers are comfortable with the design, if those are some issues they're going to face, then I guess that's the risk they're taking. But they seem comfortable that they comply. But they seem comfortable that they comply with the code and I think staff seems comfortable that they can comply with the code and that's why we came here on consent agenda with a recommendation of approval. So, we would ask for your recommendation of approval and the support of staff's recommendation.
Tammy, is Tammy still online?
Yes, she is.
Is, are the ten-foot setbacks and the seventy-five foot coverage, is that what we've approved on other MPUDs?
Yes, the ten-foot front setback with the twenty-foot to the garage has been approved. Most recently, I think, on the Denton Place MPUD and the seventy-five percent lot coverage has been approved. There's even been greater lot coverage was approved, like up to eighty-five percent, I believe I've seen in some for the primary and accessory structures. That includes pool closures and things like that.
Because it's approved doesn't mean it works.
I mean, shame on me, I missed it when we approved it previously, but I just, on the record, I think, just because, I mean, again, like John just said, just because we approved it once, I don't think it's a good precedent to set, but it's already been set, so.
Has both the ten-foot setback and seventy-five percent coverage been combined like this in an approval prior?
Have they been constructed?
I'm sorry, I didn't quite get.
Approved on paper, we.
Tammy, Tammy, did you hear my question?
No, that's what I was just saying, I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch it.
Have we ever, has this board ever approved the combination that's proposed today with a ten-foot setback and seventy-five percent lot coverage?
That information I would have to look into. I do not know if, off the top of my head, that combination has been approved. The Denton Place again, and single-family detached has a ten-foot front primary setback, twenty-foot garage setback, seventy-five percent lot coverage. The Villas have the same setbacks and they have eighty-five percent lot coverage.
In Denton Place?
And although it got approved, there was a long line of members of the public there to object quite vocally.
Good afternoon, Brad Tippin, Plating Development. Just to clarify that a little bit, I think somebody on the panel did say it just because it is approved in this manner. These are maximums and they may work in some lot areas and not in others. They're still required to comply with the other section of the code that aren't superseded. So, they still have to apply, comply with the landscaping codes and the limitations on what they can do within easements and all those other things. So, if they can't actually construct to this maximum, they're not going to be constructing to the maximum, it won't be approved. But where they can, then this would allow them to do so. So, the other aspects of engineering that both Mr. Girardi and Mr. Moody have been speaking to would still need to be followed ultimately at the site plan stage because they are not directly superseded here. I hope that clarifies a bit of that.
Yeah, I mean, clarifies it some. I still have concerns and I still have trouble picturing the product that, where we're, how we're getting away from the problem that's created with these smaller lot developments that are all crammed in.
Is there any requirement if we do this? I'm thinking about things like air conditioning condensers, five-foot setback. The air conditioning condensers, three-foot wide and the building code requires it to be at least a foot off the wall of the building, but yet there's going to be drainage swales down between the houses, how does that happen?
Brad Tippin, yes, there are requirements for whenever those setbacks go below seven and a half feet as to what can be done within that area. There's some very specific requirements.
Right, doesn't the code require that the air conditioner not be on the ground?
They either be elevated or they be in the rear of the house or there's other types of issues there on the roof, depending on what type of structure it is, if it's office structure, it's different things. But yes, those other areas of code still need to be complied with.
Yeah, I mean, that, all that being said, I mean, yes, we have approved this before, but we've approved forty-foot lots before. So, it's.
I mean, I see it, I do a lot of things over in Gulf Harbors. There's an older community and, again, there's small setbacks in there and the people, they want to build a sidewalk along the side of the house. You get five-foot setback and you build a three or four-foot wide sidewalk and then the next-door neighbor's complaining, well, he built the sidewalk and it's causing water to run off on my property. The other one plants a shrub, thinks that, I've got no problem with the shrub, but the shrub grows up, the shrub is now three feet wide and the other neighbor says, I can't walk from the front yard to the backyard because my neighbor's shrub blocks the distance between the two houses.
Is there always a utility easement in front, on the front row?
Yes.
I mean, how would they ever put a tree in front of it? They never could, right?
They couldn't.
So, I don't understand why, why we approve.
It's a conflict.
And again, how, why would we do something that is not even possible, I guess, is my question. Does that make sense? I mean, if you always have a ten-foot utility easement and the requirement is to put a tree there and you can't put a tree there, why would it even be shown that way?
Again, I think it gives flexibility from the perspective, I think like what Brad was saying, is this is maximum. So, if they go in and they can't comply with the provisions of the code that require them to do certain things, then they'll have to come down off of some of those maximums. But it gives them flexibility in terms of the product that they're putting on there. I mean, these are typical fifty and a hundred and ten foot lots, I mean, that's what these are, so.
I understand, but I mean, if that is never feasible to be able to put a tree when you have a ten-foot setback, why would we even show them as that? I don't know, I just struggle with that.
So, we would be approving something that practically speaking isn't possible?
That's what, that's what, yeah, that's what goes into my head. So, why would that, why would we even show something that's not feasibly possible?
What is, what's the MPUD that's right north of this, Cobblestone? That's just north of this?
Yeah, I was going to ask about that.
Yes.
What is, do we know what the design criteria are for that one?
Mr. Chairman, while she's looking up that information for you, there was another gentleman out here that wanted to make some public comment, but I think we cut away as soon as Mr. Sierra finished. If you wanted to give him an opportunity to speak right now.
I saw the gentleman raise his hand.
Can you speak on this, you mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Please come forward.
I have the answer for Cobblestone. Forty-foot wide lots, a hundred and ten feet in depth. Front setback for garage is twenty-five feet, twenty feet for a house. And then the coverage for principal is sixty percent. Coverage for accessory is fifteen percent. That's for the single-family detached project, product.
All right, if you'd like to state your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is Robert Valentine. My address is 2645 and 2635 Lothlory and Rain Lane. And I do need to get sworn in because I.
Have you been sworn? I'm sorry.
So, I'm thinking at the bottom here, that's Lothlory and Lane, going up to the northwest corner. When CG Pasco LLC started building Cobblestone, they found out that the fence line that's been there for over a hundred years did not follow the survey line. That statute in Florida says that any fence line that has been there for over twenty years is now the new boundary of the property. So, CG Pasco then lost ten feet of their nine building lots to the north of that property, which means if they have building lots along the end of that northwest corner, they will lose ten feet according to Florida statutes law. Otherwise, if they change it to the survey line, they will block my access to my property, which is illegal. So, they've just lost another ten feet, you've said that they didn't have too much to begin with.
All right.
That's it.
Any questions? Thank you very much. I think there's one other person wanting to speak? Yeah, and give us your name and address and then we'll swear you in.
All right, Jerry Sling, resident at sixteen oh nine Crystal Springs Road.
All right, can you swear in, please?
Do you swear or affirm that someone you're backing is just helping you out? Yes, ma'am. I wasn't going to speak until I kind of kept hearing the comment come up, it's only a hundred and fifteen homes. If you don't live in Crystal Springs, it's only a hundred and fifteen homes. But if you don't drive down Crystal Springs Road or you don't drive down Chancy coming from thirty-nine to three oh one, a hundred and fifteen homes is a hundred and fifteen homes. Our firehouse is getting ready to be gone in Crystal Springs. That's a concern for a lot of residents, it's going to be moving further down Chancy Road across train tracks. Sheriff's response is extremely slow already in Crystal Springs. I have nine-one-one calls myself that have had over a two-hour response time and that call involved a weapon. Response time and the county care for Crystal Springs has really been laxed. We have two paved roads in Crystal Springs and both of them are beyond needed repair. We have a bridge on Crystal Springs Road that hasn't passed a safety inspection since the early eighties. It's a very narrow bridge, it's a dangerous bridge. It's a thirty mile an hour road and I can count more accidents and fatalities than probably thirty-nine itself on a thirty mile an hour road. There's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of drunk drivers on Crystal Springs Road, there's a lot of dumping. We don't have the infrastructure to accommodate more building, we're actually losing infrastructure. And to think that we're losing a fire station that is embedded in the community and we have development right there at thirty-nine and Chancy that's being done. You have the development on three oh one near Chancy, across from the prison being built. Now, you're adding another a hundred and fifteen homes to a road that is extremely narrow and it just has a lot of accidents. You could pull up the police records and see those accidents. We don't need another a hundred and fifteen homes in that area until other things are addressed. Chester Taylor School is beyond capacity. We don't have school buses that can do their jobs already in Crystal Springs. Kids are having to be driven more than six blocks to a bus stop. So, we need to be looking at the infrastructure before we just build just another a hundred and fifteen homes. I thank you.
Thank you. Chris, do you have any comment on the school plan?
Chester Taylor is over. Will be, should the penny pass and be extended, we aim to remodel that and add capacity to Chester Taylor. In addition, we plan to do something at Two Rivers, which may impact that area as well, but that's a few years out. But a hundred and fifteen, if it was a hundred and fifteen houses, we'd expect about twenty or so elementary students out of that.
Could, could Tammy repeat the design criteria and the adjacent development? She was twenty-foot minimum setback, twenty-five foot to the garage?
Yes, the lots are forty by a hundred, so minimum lot width is forty, minimum lot depth is a hundred. Front setback, twenty-five feet for garage, twenty feet for residences. Side setback is seven and a half, which can be reduced to five based on meeting the criteria nine oh two point two K two B. And rear setback is fifteen. And sixty percent coverage for principal, fifteen percent for accessory. And those are the dimensional standards for a single-family detached.
And it was twenty foot to the front?
Twenty foot to the front for the house, twenty-five for the garage. And then there's a notation that on corner lots where there's, you know, more than one front, the setback may be reduced to fifteen.
Understood. I move to approve with the same conditions.
The same conditions as long as you just wrote?
Same conditions as what was just read. Twenty-five foot to the garage, twenty foot to the front, seven and a half foot side with the possibility to reduce to five by meeting the other requirements of the land development code. Rear fifteen, sixty percent max principal structure, fifteen percent maximum accessory structures. I don't particularly like the seventy-five percent lot coverage, but you're willing to do it in this case.
All right, so we have a motion? We have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, done. We have a second, a motion and a second. Further discussion on the motion?
So, those are forty-foot lots up on Cobblestone, correct? So, you're talking about applying that to a fifty-foot sink right there, that fifty-foot lot?
Yes, because my concern here has to do with, as Jamie well brought up, having room for landscaping. So, in this case, we now would have twenty foot, which leaves ten foot for the utility easement and ten foot for landscaping. It addresses my concern about you park a full-size truck in the driveway and your trailer hitch isn't hanging over the sidewalk, twenty-five feet to the garage, not twenty feet to the garage. Seven and a half feet addresses being able to put sidewalks and air conditioners and the like and it does give them the opportunity with some creative design to potentially get that down to five. And it does give them the seventy-five percent lot coverage that they're asking, although I'm particularly reluctant.
Did I understand Essen correctly in that the roadway width would also be looked at as part of the design and the construction plans, or are they locked in at twenty-two feet?
I just want to mention also that I have Stacy Burgess on the line as well that can answer some of those questions also.
Mr. Girardi, I believe we will be, you know, we have the opportunity to look at this again at time of site plan review. See the twenty-two foot versus the twenty-four foot wide internal roadways.
Essen and Stacy, if they have a twenty-two foot width of pavement, will they still be required to have a minimum fifty-foot right-of-way?
I think that is the minimum that we need.
For a local road, I think that is correct. Our tech team will act for the fifty-foot right-of-way for a local road, yes.
This is Brad Tippin. Just again, to reiterate, those are land development code details that are not superseded by the MPUD. So, those things do still need to. I believe that is it, but those details cannot be superseded by this if they're not directly in here.
They got to get alternative standards.
Exactly, they would have to go through some process to get something where it would be reviewed to see if it was appropriate or not.
Jamie, the thought, my thought and the reason behind that question was having two less feet of pavement width doesn't bother me and that one of my concerns of when we get density in small lots is there isn't enough parking. At least, okay, now if the road's a little narrower, they have a little more room between the edge of the pavement and the right-of-way if they got to park.
That's right.
Off the road. Foot on either side for what that's worth.
Okay, any other discussion? No, I mean, and again, I just, I mean, the only reason I brought that up was more of a policy thing and my concern on the policy more so than just this single project. I think that, you know, we've heard the concerns about the developments that have come out and are in the ground. You go out there and they, just all you see is building, you see no landscaping, you see the street, you see building and driveway. So, that's primarily the reason I brought it up was more of a kind of policy position on that than anything else.
I agree with you.
Before you all continue, I've obviously emailed David. Does Shelley have the opportunity to come up and address the concerns raised by the last two speakers that spoke after she last spoke? Is your rules allowed for that?
I could certainly do that, Shelley. Well, would you like to tell us anything other than?
And then also in regards to.
Be nice, though.
In regards to the question about the survey and the fence, is that something you can explain?
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we're not going to encroach on anybody's easement and we're, we have no intention of blocking anybody's access, I'm aware of, so there's nothing that's come up in the title work and in the year we've been in process that that's been an issue. So I'm not aware of any issues with blocking people's access or encroaching on easements. And again, the, the work that we're doing is to Crystal Springs Road, we're actually bringing that road up to standard from the southern boundary of our property to the southern boundary of the Cobblestone MPUD. So that road will be brought up to standard because I know there were some concerns about trips going out on that road.
And I, Harry.
I have one other question, so, and maybe you said this and maybe I missed it, but remind me what the buffering requirement is between this and the neighbors to the east?
Pursuant to the land development code? If it's residential, I think it's 10-foot, but maybe staff can, it's not against any right-of-way that I'm aware of. It's all residential on that other side. It'll be pursuant to the land development code, whatever perimeter buffering requirements are, depending on what the adjacency is to it.
And there's some landscaping involved with that, correct?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
With that, within whatever that buffer is?
Yeah, there's going to have to be landscaping on the perimeter of the property, yeah, depending on what the adjacency is, which is what your code calls for.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question, I'm not quite sure how we handle this one.
Oh, we have a motion?
I know. And we set that aside for one moment before we called a question. And the reason is because it says that it's alleged that I have a, an LLC with Mr. Sierra and would therefore have a conflict in voting. Could somebody explain that? Because I'm not aware of any LLC I have with Mr. Sierra.
Okay, there's no, there's no contest, no business.
I have no business with.
If you're addressing me, I don't know what reference you're on.
No, I've never seen you before today.
Yeah. Well, maybe you should send him an invoice.
Yeah, or ask for your distribution, one or the other.
All right. If there are no further questions or discussion, we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No for like sign. Motion carries. Okay.
Motion to adjourn unless we have other, is this Denise?
I don't know, I just sort of like it here.
Second.
Thank you all very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Very good.